Good morning, welcome to the West Combe County Board of Commissioners Meeting Work Session, June 22nd, 2022. You'll belong hybrid meeting in person or via Zoom. Item number one, area nine, area, region, boy, I tell you what, there's a mouthful. Region nine, area on aging, 2023, 25 multi-year plan, committee of the whole. There's a copy right in there with your work session and the thing is sixty some pages long. I don't know if anybody went through it. I did, I did not read it though. But anyway, you know what it's about and it's, it's for us to approve their multi-year plan, which is time sensitive, which there seems to be a lot of that going around lately. And it's basically, they have to have all the county, all the counties like the health department to sign on to these things. So it's just a matter of doing a motion to approve the region nine area agency on aging, proposed 2023, 2025 multi-year plan for aging services. Is there anything in that you guys noticed that I maybe I didn't in regards to that? Okay. Oh, we were.
Yeah, they've added a motion or a resolution, the way I read it.
Come on.
One or the other.
One or the other, right.
The way I read it.
Yep, so that's why we're doing it. Okay, yep, we're doing a, we're doing a motion for them, so. All right. Next one is budget sustainability recommendations. Jody's, I'm done, unable to attend right now today, so. Jody, myself and Ken did meet on this. We talked about this once before, didn't we, Ken?
I think so.
Publicly? But, you know, she's got the facts and figures and at this short notice right here, there's, other than we did make, did meet and, there's a couple of things that we can possibly do, but we're watching things right now. I think we're, I think we looked at, remember Ken, how much we're looking at possibly being into the fund balance? Fifty some thousand, fifty-two thousand, something like that.
That sounds close.
So. Okay, so it's an ongoing thing. There's no extra money there. So. If that would happen though, what will happen is, is that I think we were at a fifteen point five fund balance. Fifteen point five percent fund balance last year after. And then this year, we were anticipating that we're probably going to end of that and we'll probably end up about thirteen and a half, if I remember right. Anything else on that, Ken, that you can shed any light on?
Well, do we want to touch on the, oh, we're at a talk about the restoration?
Yep, we can talk about that, probably a good time to do it.
That would help immensely with all of our budget problems. And I was just thinking, we should probably meet, have some kind of a meeting, you know, with department heads and employees and unions and, and, you know, we really need to get them on board. They, they need to realize how important this is because we're not going to lose a commissioner over this. And we're not going to cut, you know, but i- if this doesn't pass, looking at the budget as we have in the past and the way that it's trending, we don't have anything to trim. We're going to have to cut staff, services. I mean, God forbid, we'd have to close the jail, but other counties around us have had to do that.
Well, you're right.
Thinking, you know, I mean, if, if we don't have the buy-in from the employees and department heads, that's, that's like trying to push water uphill.
Right. Well, I did, I did have been in contact with Lenawee County. And as far as using county money to promote this millage request, we cannot do that. And their funding, when they did it, they got a county, they got the whole county behind it, whether it was employees or whoever it was, but they also had businesses behind it. And that's where their money come from, was donations from businesses to help the county get that thing passed. And then at the same time, they raised enough money, they hired a company to come in and promote it. And I know that the last time, I'm going to use Kirtland as an example, the last time they went for that, that they did the same thing. They actually hired a, a marketing company. They were able to pass their millage at that particular time, so. But, one of the things I haven't done is, is I don't know how much that's going to, how much that would entail, but I'm sure it's quite a bit of money. I mean, you don't do it for nothing.
Since it can't be a part of the county, you know, maybe by getting the employees and department heads and everybody else involved in this week, you know, you're, you're going to need like a, it's like when we run for office, you know, you gotta have a, some kind of a, a committee to raise, raise funding and, and to buy signs, you know? I, I hate to have somebody vote for something just because they see it on a sign, but then some people think that, well, they don't see a sign promoting, uh, passing a millage, then there's not any genuine concern or, you know, desire or, you know, they're, they're not putting forth any effort, so. I mean, even on our veterans' millage or sheriff's department road patrol millage, we have signs out at least, so.
This, this restoration millage, the thing that we've gotten, gotten ourselves at the point now is, is that we have to put it back on. We have to put it on. It probably should have been put on years ago and kept up with years ago because Headley.
We tried it years ago, failed.
Yeah, but I'm talking about forty years ago.
Yeah.
I'm talking about when Headley kicked in. In other words, when Headley kicked in, well, that's probably thirty years ago, but anyway, ninety-four, I think, is when Headley went in. But anyway, when Headley come in, that's when we start getting limited every year and we were, we were capped at whatever inflation was for that particular year, but expenses aren't capped. That's what's happened to us in our four point six oh that we're by law that we can go to has been reduced to less than three point six oh. Also, the difference is one point five oh, or one point five million and it should have been kept up with every four to eight years, starting in nineteen ninety-four, but it, it wasn't. Well, here we are. If it fails, if this thing fails again, it isn't going to help us, isn't going to help us. Ken's right, we're going to be, it's going to be even tougher.
Well, one thing that you stated previously is that we don't have to ask for the one point five miller a year.
You're right.
It is an option that we would have.
The commissioners would have.
To that amount, but we don't have to take that amount.
Correct, we can levy. In other words, we can do our budgets. And if we only need seven hundred and fifty thousand, which is half of it.
Yeah.
That's all we would levy.
Yeah. So it's not going to be maxed every time, no?
No, it's not going to be maxed every time, so we need, we need to, we need to get that out there, so.
That I would recommend to the chairman, vice chairman, the commissioners, we have to be careful, we don't take time away from the employee's day to push a millage. We don't want to muddy the waters. And I, I respect what Mr. Moeben said earlier, but we have to be very careful. It's, it's, we don't want to take time away from the, from employees' jobs to try to pass a millage. They, they, they're going to listen to our meeting and they're going to, we said be very careful, you know, we don't muddy the waters.
So, we can discuss it, are we going to decide on anything?
I don't think so, Mr. Chairman. I think it was a good discussion at the end of this day, let's, let's let the voters decide. We have a, we have an obligation, responsibility to help push it along, and I think we've done that in the past. I know I went on record about two months ago and publicly gave my comments here at the meeting. Those meetings, those comments still stand?
Have you been to, has anybody been to any organizations yet to make any presentations on this? Oh, I'll talk to, I'll talk to Jim Anderson about the Rotary here in town and make a presentation there. I would, Mark, if you could reach out to some people, some organizations in Houghton Lake, it would be great.
Yeah, my thoughts are on record, people know how I feel.
But, I mean, they have a Rotary over there, they have a Lions Club over there. You could make, you can make present, you can make presentations to them.
I wouldn't do the Rotary, but I've, I'm in the Lions Club. The Core League, VFW, and that's Eagles, Elks, and those.
The other thing, Ken's right, as far as signs, and I don't know at this particular point if it's too late or not, I don't know if we could even get them or not. But then again, where do we get the money? Anybody got, anybody got any ideas?
No, like I said, it's just.
It could be taxpayers' money.
I know that.
It's just a short window right now, because August second is the, is the election.
Right.
I use this a month, a little over a month.
It's going to be an interesting election. With everything I've seen so far. You know, I do like Ken's idea as far as, you know, I, I, I honestly believe that the employees are already behind it, but we could also, we could still hold a meeting, Ken, and have volunteers come down. Now, if that doesn't take away from their day, I think it has to, you know, I mean, that would have to be okay to their department heads. I'm sure not going to hold a, hold a meeting and have, have recorders or disparate court come down here to this thing when they've got, they've got, they've got court cases they got to do, deal with, so.
We don't want to be in a position where anybody feels coerced or pressured. That, that would be irresponsible for us and, and that's something that.
Okay. Anybody gets any ideas, please share them with me, okay? But I did check it out as far as we can't use county money. Now, it may be something, I know at this late juncture, we can't hire anybody, of course, we don't have the money to hire anybody anyway, but that's, that's, there are companies out there that do those things. And then once if we, we were successful to get this thing through, I would recommend that it, be looked at particularly probably every four years, maybe every six years, because if Headley keeps on the books the way it is, we can know more than, if we get it okay and we go back to our four point six percent, Headley comes along and the next thing, it already starts lowering the next year. It's all tied to, it's all tied to assessment of property, so. Okay. Anything else on that? The right one here. Item number three, animal shelter kennel worker wages.
Sir?
Actually, this gypsy moth is supposed to say sponge moth. Okay. They got it proposed and they've got the current right there. And when you look at the animal shelter working as sponge moth, workers that proposed with first step, first grade would go from eleven thirty-eight, the proposed is twelve thirteen. Now, these are recommendations that were made through the wage committee. Okay, so this has been looked at and been scrutinized, and this is what they're making a recommendation. So. Anybody got any thoughts on it so far?
Well, Mr. Muckenthaler, chairman.
Like I said, I know there's very few jobs out there that people will work for eleven dollars. I mean, it's not a big increase, like you said, but, I mean, something's better than nothing if we want to try and maintain our work staff. Same with the spongy moth people, they're out there driving around, doing the work out there. I'm sure they get paid mileage, which is better than what the animal shelter people get. They don't get mileage, they just get an hourly wage.
Yeah. Of course, they use a vehicle.
Said, I know we don't have any money, but yeah, I mean, if we want to retain people, we're going to have to start paying them.
Well, the, the one thing about animal shelter and spongy moth, I can't get used to that word. Spongey moth, those are separate millages, and I did, I did check, the money is there in both budgets for this. So, you know, these are, you know, in some reason, when, when I look at this, when I look at it, like you're right, Ken, when I look at step one, it's eleven thirty-eight an hour, then it's going to be increased to twelve thirteen, that's not exorbitant.
You know?
I mean, that's in the grand scheme of things, it's, it's not a lot of money, so.
Yeah. Basically token, but yeah.
So, anybody else's thoughts, Ken and Mark?
Usually I'm, I'm the guy that says, no, these kind of things, however, it is in the budget, and the kicker is CPI is right around, rolling around eight percent this year, as I looked, I mean, it's all over the map. Stock market's down sixteen, seventeen, eighteen percent. Wages, you know, used car prices are forty percent, so on and so forth. We've all followed the news. I, I'm, I'm in favor of this, Mr. Chair.
Well, it's like the, you know, last year, the Marine Patrol budget, we had, we had money in the budget and couldn't find workers, they didn't, so we had to increase the wage on that, just to, to fill the positions and, I don't know, I'll have to defer to Tim on the animal shelter, but I know the spongy moth, they, they have a hard time recruiting and retaining adequate staff. They're usually operating on, on the short side, they don't, they're not fully, fully staffed, so.
Yeah, most, most of those only work one year. They'll work one year and says, no, that ain't worth it. I think if I make more money somewhere else.
Right. And I realize that it's, it's a seasonal job, you know, and you got to understand sometimes when a seasonal person leaves, he might leave for a regular paying job, which is, that's understandable. But at the same time, some people are just leaving because there isn't enough money.
Yep.
So. I'm, I'm okay with putting it on, you okay with putting it on, Tim?
No problem with that, sir.
Okay, so we'll put that on for the next one. And this did come out of the wage and, the Waging Compensation Committee, which, that's why we set that thing up. They take a look at things, they look at a, they look across, all around the state to see where different counties and stuff are at, so, and this was their recommendation, so. I'm on board with it also, so we'll put it on for a motion for next meeting, correct?
Yes, sir.
Very good.
Okay. Lead juvenile probation officer, same thing there, this come out of the Waging Compensation Committee also. The only thing with this one, it shows the new one, but it doesn't show the difference of what it was. So what I don't know, guys, is, is going down to number five, step one, the new rate is twenty ninety-nine, what I don't know is, is what the old one was. Oh, I would say that, but I'm only guessing when I say this, but then, I would say that both of them are, are the same types of raises that we were looking at for the, for the animal shelter and the spongy moth, so. Other thing I can't remem, I, I don't know is, is juvenile prob, probation officer and chief juvenile probation officer, that in the courts budget? I want to know if it was district, I don't know if it was.
Well, we're kind of off guard here with Jody being gone, and we were expecting her to present this, so.
Yeah, I'd like to, you know, I, I would have, animal shelter, this, this is minimum, I would have liked to have, you know, Dee Dee here present, but she, you know, she's busy. This is something that I'd like to be able to say.
Who here?
Dee.
For the animal shelter.
Oh.
But, but bottom line, I know they're busy over there, that we're, we're close here. I'd like more information as far as where we started initially to where we're at, and this is a lot more money, this is a lot more of an impact. And if we could, if we could discuss it maybe now, Mr. Chair, but maybe make a decision.
Well, I don't, I can't honestly say whether it's a lot more money. When you said that, I don't necessarily agree with that, we don't know. I can put, we can put this back on.
I just seem.
For the next, for the next work session. And if chairman and the vice chairman will make a decision whether we put it on for a motion, proposed motion, okay?
This one, your animal had a proposed and current, this just has whatever.
I do have a lot of confidence in the, in the compensation committee that they did take a good look at this, I just don't have that information to be able to tell you guys.
I'm not trying to disrespect the.
No, I know that, I'm just.
Just want more information.
Just trying to explain where we're at here, okay?
Proposed and current, I feel more comfortable with that kind of information.
And I'm, and I have, I have all the confidence in the world that they took a good, hard look at that, and it's probably, probably no different than what's going on with animal shelter and gypsy moth, but we can put them, we can put them both back on, and we can still put them on for motion, but we can go on record as we did discuss it this week.
Be fine with that, Mr. Chair.
All right. Okay. Item number four, reallocation of corrections officers premium pay. We did make a.
The number five.
Excuse me, number five, thank you. Number five, reallocation of correction officer premium pay. I'm not correctly, but I think this was at least a month ago, maybe six weeks ago, we put a motion on to use some of our county ARP money to give to our corrections officers who worked during the COVID period. And we had identified all those, and it was about, I'm going to say with about forty thousand dollars. We did okay and we voted on that. Well, at this particular time, it had to go to the unions. And I should say unions, union. And they have not voted on this at this point. The union is, shows not to vote on this. That's the union that has the deputies and the corrections officers in it, so at this particular time, it would be my, my recommendation that we pull the money back, use it for something else, because, not because I'm not, not against what we did, but they have to accept this, and if they can't accept it, we can use it for other things. We have since found out that we can use it on some other projects, so.
What happens hypothetically, Mr. Chair, that they accept the money? Pull the money out, try to put it back in? How do we insert that?
What do you mean?
Well, if we pull, you said we pull the money out now because they haven't voted on it, I'm just kind of struggling here.
They did vote on it.
We did vote on it.
No, they, they turned it down?
Yes.
They did not vote on it.
That doesn't make sense.
They didn't take any action on it. Okay?
Is it during, take action on it?
It seems as though they would have by now if they wanted to do something with the money. I mean, if you give them a month and a half, and if they had no action on this, it's, okay, we're giving you this much money for the correction officers and stuff like this, seems like one way or another that they would have had a union meeting to say, okay, we'll accept what you guys did, or do we take and split it between the sheriff's department and the correction officers? I mean, they did nothing.
Right.
Kind of equals what they did.
They've been sitting on it.
And how long?
And that's, it's, if that's not in our jurisdiction, we need to have it acted on, and if it's not going to be acted on.
Yeah, they're going to sit on this for a year. I mean, we have no idea how long they're going to do it, before they even act upon it.
But to, to, to pull it back, we would have to do another motion to rescind.
Rescind it.
When's our next meeting, Mr. Chair, is it two weeks, three?
Three weeks.
Shoot from the hip here, which I hate to do, but from time to time. We could craft a motion, I'm, I'm just thinking out loud. Craft a motion, rescinding the motion, as Mr. Muckenthaler just pointed out. That would give the union an opportunity to either act on it or not act on it, and be able to contact Jody or the chair. They don't act on it within the next three weeks, then we rescind it. And I'm, I'm kind of inarticulate, but trying to.
Well, this is unusual. I guess we're in unusual times.
If we contacted the union, told them this was our intent, if they hadn't acted on it, give them some time, that are, they're give them some time to consider their decision, or lack thereof. A decision is a decision, but if they have time to act on it, knowing that it's our decision, chairman and vice chairman to put on the motion, or planning to rescind the motion if they haven't acted on it. And it, not very articulate, but you kind of see the gist I'm trying to shoot from here?
Right, you know, this is, this is, we're talking about the ARP funds here, is that correct?
Right.
And this is a distribution out of our first allocation, we get the second allocation of ARP, correct?
Yeah, we do, but if I remember, if I remember correctly, we, the money we allocated to the county, we've, we've already spent all of it. Which, which, which would come out of that, which would put it back in there. So, um, I know, I think, I don't know, is the crane out there today? Is, are they working on those air handlers and stuff?
Yesterday, they said four, they said four more.
Okay, so, so that project's coming out of that money too, and that would turn out to be a really costly deal.
I guess what I'm looking for, Mr. Chair, is to, to complete the loop, ask the union to either give us a letter saying yes, they're going to accept the pay, or no, they're going to accept the pay. Do it your confusion. I'd hate to see it come here in three weeks from now, and have the union say that we didn't notify them and give them a. I'd like to have the union rep either say yes or no, so it's definitive and, and, like, right now, this likes, this is.
Well, I'd, I'd agree with Tim, if they've been sitting on this thing for six weeks, I don't think they're going to do anything.
And this is just my suggestion, have the union individual write a letter, say yes or no, to complete the loop. I like, I like things tidy in that regard.
I mean, like I said, we can send them a letter with our intent, saying this hasn't been acted on as of yet. In three weeks, we're having another meeting. If, if we don't hear from you either way, we wish to rescind our motion and withdraw the money.
Thanks, Tim, yeah, that's, that satisfies my concerns.
Yeah, we know that something's going to be happening with it, one way or the other.
Yes or no?
Well, it's a little more than that, I do like maybe Tim's idea to put it in, put it in writing back to him and says, you know, and then, then they can respond in kind with what you're asking for, Mr. Milburn.
Just looking to tidy up the loop, so there, there is no ambiguity or confusion.
Okay. Anything else on that, there's nothing further, we can go on that today, right?
Right, but we could, you know, continue on, have your end of meeting to.
Right.
Our intent is to have this for a motion.
Right.
Back off on that. If it came down the road farther too, then we should.
Well, that's an option to put it on, Ken, for a motion for next meeting, but at the same time, I do like Tim's idea of the, the letter to the union to, you know, you need to, you need to respond to this one way or the other and respond back to us and write, correct?
Yeah, because this is what our intent is, if we don't hear from you.
We can, we can get that out.
We have the right to rescind the money.
Yep. All right. And then they can decide whether to give us a yes or give us a no.
Yeah.
They need to respond in writing, so. At this point, I'm going to leave a question mark on whether it's going to be on for a motion or not, okay? But for next meeting, I am looking at a motion for the area, for the region nine area agency.
No, we got that this week.
Oh, no, that's today, you're correct, right? And then I'm looking at potential motions for the animal shelter kennel workers wages and for the lead juvenile prob, probation officers.
Sir.
Okay, but I will put those two back on for, oh, actually, I put, I put number three, number four, number five, I'll look, put them back on for work session again. All right? Okay. That's all I got. And we will be back here at nine o'clock. West Combe County Board of Commissioners Meeting, June 22nd, 2022, ten o'clock, hybrid meeting, successful in person or via Zoom. Everyone, please stand for the pledge of allegiance, please. Melvin, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the states of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll call board members.
Melvin? Schneider?
Here.
Milburn? Muckenthaler?
Here.
Oh, Russo?
Russo.
Vacation. Item four, approval of the agenda, please.
I'll second.
Motion is made by Commissioner Milburn, seconded by Commissioner Muckenthaler to approve the agenda. Any further discussion from any commissioner at this time regards to the agenda? During our scene, non-roll call.
Melvin?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
Muckenthaler?
Yes.
Asher Carey. Oshkay.
Okay, item number five, public comment, agenda items only, any public comment at this time? Regards to the agenda. Okay, hearing or seeing none, item number six, Administrator Controller Report. Due to her absence, um, we will not have report. Item number seven, correspondence, we've got the MAC Legislative Report from June 3rd. Consumers Energy email in regards to $100 million reliability upgrades, which come from Rich Castle from um, consumers. Item C is a MAC. June 10th Legislative Update. And item D is a hearing county resolution, and I'm trying to think of what that was, I read it this morning. Uh, oh, as regards to their area agency for aging, which was Region Seven or Region Nine, so, okay? Any any comments from any commissioner in regards to correspondence? Okay, item eight, monthly department reports, animal shelter and animal control reports on file. And the Veterans GDX Comparison Report. Any commissioner have any comments in regards to those two reports? Okay, item number nine, any visitors that like to be recognized at this point? Okay. Under unfinished or new business, um, I did get some clarification while we were between our two meetings. Uh, going back to the Juvenile Probation Officer and the Chief Juvenile Probation Officer, underlying five, that is the, um, where the Juvenile Probation Officers are right now, and there's three people that function in that position right now. And then one of those three people is an acting position. So, actually, what they're looking at doing is, is taking that one person and moving them into the new position of Chief Juvenile Probation Officer. And that would be the wages. Well, these are existing wages for them, they're not increases. I mean, it would be an increase for that person that going from probation officer to the chief probation officer. Okay, we'll still do what we said before, we put it on discussion, and then we'll put it on for motion for the next meeting, all right?
Thank you, sir.
All right, so I wanted to clarify that, I did get some information on that, so.
Clarification, sir.
All right, any other new finished, unfinished or new business from anybody? Okay, item 11, motions and resolutions, please. Amy, number one, please.
Move to approve the Region Nine Area Agency on Aging Proposed 2023 to 2025 Multi-Year Plan for Aging Services.
I'll make, I'll make it the second, Mr. Chair.
And motion is made by Commissioner Melvin, seconded by Commissioner Melbourne to approve their Region Nine Area Agency on A, on Aging Proposed 2023-25 Multi-Year Plan for Aging Services. Any further discussion from any commissioner at this time? Hearing or seeing none, roll call.
Muckenthaler.
Yes.
Melvin.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Melvin.
Yes.
Oshkay.
Okay. Motion two, please.
Move to appoint Kathleen Pardo, Republican Representative, to a partial term on the Roscommon County Board of Canvassers effective June 22nd, 2022 through October 31st, 2025.
I'm going to move, Mr. Chair.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Melbourne, seconded by Commissioner Muckenthaler to appoint Kathleen Pardo to the Republican, Republican Representative to a partial term on the Roscommon County Board of Canvassers effective 2022 through October 31st. Any further discussion from any commissioners at this time? Hearing or seeing none, roll call.
Schneider.
Yes.
Melvin.
Yes.
Melvin.
Yes.
Muckenthaler.
Yes.
Oshkay.
Okay, thank you. Didn't have to read quite as much this time, did you, Amy? Okay. Item number 12, committee reports, please. Who wants to go first here?
I can start up.
Okay.
Um, we had, uh, Pledge and Finance two weeks ago. I had animal control on the 16th. And that's it.
Okay.
COA and MCAA.
Which one's that, MC?
Or the Michigan Counties, uh, or the Michigan, Northwest Michigan Community Agency, Action Agency.
Okay, good.
For a second, I was thinking Northern Michigan Counties.
Thought you said MCA, which is more the Michigan Commissioners Association, but we didn't meet.
There are only one A, this one's got two As in it.
Okay.
Action Agency.
All right, okay, all right, that's a lot of clarification. Ken?
Uh, we had the Veterans Affairs Committee meeting, um, Thursday. Um, we, uh, assisted, uh, with the reimbursement for funeral expenses for three deaths, we, uh, transported, um, veterans in a new way, um, we assisted, uh, for medical transportations, that's down from in the 30s in the past. We're only transporting now, uh, to pickup points where a VA bus comes at Ormeil Road or West Branch. To take them to, uh, appointments and other places. And we had $1,650 in donations for the Veterans Affairs Office in the last month.
Is, uh, transfer, is, uh, Transit Authority taking them to that point, Ken?
Yeah.
Okay, good, that's working out well then, huh?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Um, and then, as you probably all know, we had, we were paid a, a visit from the Governor's Office immediately following our, uh, Veterans Affairs Committee meeting. Um, with the assistance of Julie, Julie, uh, really made this happen because she gave me a good contact person for the Governor's Office, and I reached out to them because I wanted the SARs flag to fly over the state Capitol, the same one that we have out in front. And I didn't want Michigan to be the 50th state to do it, already 24 states fly that flag. And so, in, in conversations with the Governor's Office, then it mushroomed into a roundtable with all of our, uh, staff and volunteers in the Veterans Office. And in addition to, uh, they insisted that we have a female veteran here. So we arranged for that, and she sat right next to the Governor and, and did a really good job of explaining how well our office had helped a female veteran. And, um, the Governor, uh, accepted the flag and, and was going to do her best to see that it flies over the Capitol. And, and, and also, um, after the meeting, after the roundtable was over, the Governor said, uh, that that was one of the best roundtables that she had attended in a long time, so. It was really a good, uh, recognition of our Veterans Office and what they're doing. She, she indicated to us that she's concerned about mental health, veteran suicide, and services to veterans, and asked if there was anything that the Governor's Office could do to help our Veterans Department, and I think I said, uh, about free park passes for veterans for the state parks. So, they're going to work on that.
Hey. Um, I had the agenda meeting on the 16th, um, I've been meeting, I did meet prior to, I am working with the Health Department in regards to union negotiations down there. Uh, there's a number of meetings coming up, we've had one already. Uh, NMCA, which was scheduled for, uh, this past Monday, would be, but because of Juneteenth, we did not meet. Um, and I think that's about it. Some respects, as, as busy as it is, it's been quiet, so. All right. Item number 13, any public comment at this time, please? Okay, everybody out there recognized, everybody can hear me, okay? I hate to say this, but a new record, item number 14.
Soon move, Mr. Chair.
Motion, uh, motion is made by Commissioner Melbourne, seconded by Commissioner Muckenthaler. All in favor of adjourning, singified by saying aye. Aye.